I'd like to call the Monday, November 14th, 2016 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. If everyone would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome everyone this evening, and welcome to everyone watching us at home as well. I will run through our agenda for the evening real quick. We will have a public hearing on the Unified Development Code, then I'll have another public hearing on a conditional use permit for Colonial Gardens. We will have a planned unit development, final plan and site and design review for Colonial Gardens, a final plat for Colonial Gardens, preliminary plat for Reed Acres, as well as a final plat for Reed Acres, an amended planned residential overlay, final plan for the pines, and then other business and adjourn. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes, or the consent agenda, I mean, I'm sorry, which is the first item. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two on the agenda will be the public hearing. I'm going to run through procedure for the public hearing first. I will open the public hearing, call for exhibits from the city attorney, staff will make comments, the applicant will be able to make a presentation, then I will ask for witnesses in favor, any witnesses opposed, then I'll have general discussion and question and answer among the commissioners, and then I will close the public hearing and we will consider it for a recommendation. So with that, I am going to open the public hearing for the Unified Development Code text amendment UDCT-10-16-5544, and ask for the exhibits.
Thank you. The city has four exhibits. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Exhibit two is the affidavit of publication in the examiner on October 29th, 2016. Exhibit three is the application with attachments, and exhibit four is Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. Those are the city's exhibits.
All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Hawley is going to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, again before you tonight is a recommendation for some amendments to the Unified Development Code. Our current Unified Development Code was adopted in August of 2015, and it became effective in October of 2015. We provided a first round of changes to the UDC in February of 2016, and as we continue to use the code, we continue to find things that need to be amended in order to make it work better with the situations that we have in the city. So this particular round includes 10 changes, and I will go over, I'm not going to go over them individually, I assume you've all looked at the staff report. I will hit each one of them, and then if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those questions. So to start out with, we have 405-030, has to do with building type standards, and the changes have a reduction in the transparency for buildings, certain building types, and it also amends the parking location and allows for a small amount of parking to be placed forward of a building. Section 411-040 is just a glossary change, and it includes a definition for transparency. Section 406-020, lot arrangement, has to do with corner visibility. We had that previously in our code, and it was taken out. We are putting it back in for ease of code enforcement. Section 403-050 is public improvements and performance guarantees, and we are going to add to that also development and maintenance agreements to formalize those agreements that we do need with subdivision improvements. Section 407-040 is site landscaping design. With our new UDC, we did not put in the provisions for a landscape plan requirement. We found that necessary, so we are requesting to add that back in. Section 411-030, and 405-050, and Table 405-030-1, all have to do with adding a use type for building and construction contractor uses. We did not have that in the current code. Section 402-060 is Development Review Board, and it is just defining, further defining the duties and powers of the board. Section 404-240, the downtown development code, we are requesting to remove the frontage width in a T5 zone. The frontage width was becoming one of those issues that was difficult for developers to meet. Section 405-030, non-residential building type standard, we are proposing a frontage width of 75 feet. And finally, section 408-010, which is the floodplain management ordinance, we are doing some pretty significant changes to the floodplain management ordinance in order to meet the current federal NFIP program requirements. These changes did go to the Development Advisory Committee on October 10th of 2016, and the Development Advisory Committee did provide a recommendation for approval with a four to zero vote. With that, I'll stand for any questions. I know you've gone through them. If you have any questions on any of these, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Hawley? Commissioner Phillips?
I'll be quick. On the, adding the definition for transparency, was there any discussion or thought given to putting in something along the lines of transparency does not necessarily mean glass or a window or something like that?
No. We did, we had discussion about that. We did not put that in the specific language. What we did was with the definition, we made it, we hoped to make it clear that there are options beyond just, just glass.
Okay. We're open for recommendations, though.
Do you have any, any ideas that you'd like to throw in there? We could put, we could certainly put verbiage in there, let the, let the council know that you're recommending verbiage that specifically states that transparency does not-
Because that's the first thought when someone hears transparency.
It is.
And even on the one we did just recently on Dollar General, we kind of had to clarify that was not what we were looking for.
Exactly. So I, so I certainly understand, and if that's a recommendation that you would like to forward, we'd be happy to do that. I, I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Yeah, I would, I would kind of like to see that, yes.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Fairbanks?
I was curious about the effective date being January of 2017. Is that to allow for the council to approve it also?
This, these, this particular set of code changes is intended to go to the city council in one week, and if we had something in the staff report, which I'm assuming you got that out of the memorandum-
Right.
-I would not anticipate that to be January. No, I would anticipate the, if the city council chooses to pass this ordinance, this ordinance amendment, that we would proceed forward with these amendments in, after the meeting, after it was passed, and it can take some time for them to actually get codified from the sense of our code writers, but as far as our implementing these changes, we would anticipate doing it after council approves it-
Okay.
-and not waiting.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in favor of these amendments? Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition of the amendments? All right, I will bring it back up here for discussion on the record, if there is any. All right, seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend, sorry, I would move that we recommend approval of the UDC changes as listed here with the addition of, an additional sentence to the transparency definition, that transparency is not limited to, or is not restricted to glass only, or something along those lines.
Does not necessarily mean glass.
Does not necessarily mean glass.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second from Commissioner Fairbanks. All those in favor, this will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Kradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Heaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Baralata?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye. So that recommendation passes, and we will go forward to the city council for their meeting on the 21st. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for a conditional use permit for Colonial Gardens. We're going to hear items four and five as well, with that which is the final plan and site plan design review, as well as the final plat. So with that, I will open the public hearing for a conditional use permit CUP-10-16-5551, and ask for the exhibits.
Thank you. The city has eight exhibits. Exhibit one is the staff report with attachments. Exhibit two is the affidavit of publication in the examiner on October 29th, 2016. Exhibit three is the application with attachments. Exhibit four is the 185-foot notification map. Exhibit five is the names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Exhibit six is the copy of the letter sent to the property owners. Exhibit seven is Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and exhibit eight is the 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. Those are the city's exhibits.
All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Wright is going to make the staff presentation this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Graham and Commissioners. Before you this evening, our three requests to allow Colonial Gardens to proceed with the first phase of development. Colonial Gardens is located north of southeast Wyatt Road and west of southeast Adams Dairy Parkway. The first request is for a conditional use permit for, to allow outdoor sales and services in the GB General Business Zoning District, which covers approximately 21.91 acres of the site. This conditional use permit would allow outdoor sales that are typically associated with a nursery and garden center, which would include outdoor sales of flowers, plants, trees, and paving materials. Since some of the outdoor sales area will have a gravel base, a condition has been included that gravel areas shall be monitored and treated as necessary to minimize dust impacts to adjacent properties. And a special event permit may also be required during special sales and events throughout the year in which traffic control may be required. The second request is for a PD final plan and site plan design review. And this area, sorry, let me bring up that map. So this is the proposed site plan map. The first phase for this covers approximately 16.49 acres and is generally located in this area up to, through there. Due to the size of the first phase, the applicant has requested that phase one be split into sub-phases. The first sub-phase will be the construction of the 13, or sorry, 1400 square foot cafe, which is located down in this area, just south of the existing lawn and garden center. The second sub-phase will be a remodel in addition to the existing lawn and garden center, approximately 10,000 square feet. And that second sub-phase will also include the development of the courtyard that is located just south of the lawn and garden area and west of the cafe, which is down in this area. And then that would, that phase would, the sub-phase would also include the removal of the 25, existing 25 feet of the Lath House along Wyatt Road, to remove that from the landscape buffer. Additional sub-phases include improvements in addition to existing greenhouses and storage buildings on site, as well as the construction of the bulk storage building, which is up in sort of their outdoor sales and storage area. The first phase does include 152 parking spaces, which you can see here, this is what's proposed. However, due to the existing 71 parking spaces that they have, they would like to keep those, they have existing 171, or sorry, 71 parking spaces in front of their lawn and garden center, they would like to maintain those for the first phase, and then do the 152 spaces as part of the third phase. That way, the redoing of that parking lot does not interfere with their current business. A condition has been made that all drive aisles be installed in conjunction with the development of phase two. The main reason for that is that these drive aisles through this area are currently not installed, and those would need to be installed before the second phase is developed, which would include the UPIC area up here in the northeast corner. So those drive aisles would provide access to that use. The applicant has submitted an alternative compliance landscape plan with, for phase one, and they're requesting exceptions for the number of shade trees along the southeast Wyatt Road buffer, as well as to allow some of the plant units to be developed outside of the buffer due to the overhead power lines and the barriers with some of the existing buildings that will remain within that 25-foot buffer. There also required a six-foot privacy fence and landscape buffer along the north property line, adjacent to the SF7, the future Colonial Highlands, single-family development. However, the applicant is requesting to only install the fence instead of the tree, instead of a landscape buffer due to this existing area up here is going to remain a tree nursery, which provides a buffer between the single-family home, future single-family homes, and the more retail component of the business. And then the applicant also intends on purchasing the property to the east, and therefore they are requesting to hold off on installing that buffer until the third phase. If they do purchase the property, they won't install it all if it becomes part of the Colonial Gardens development. Overall, the applicant has provided over 2,800 plant units, just short 57 plant units from the required 2,875 plant units required with the first phase. The building design has not, has not changed from what was provided to you with the concept plan back in September. They're still proposing modern Prairie-style architecture. Building materials will be primarily wood with cement panels, masonry, and metal roofing. And the bulk storage building will be an all-metal building, approximately up to a height of 38 feet. And the only buildings that we didn't have, we didn't receive elevations are on, on any additions to existing greenhouses and storage buildings. However, staff does recommend that those be reviewed administratively to make sure that they meet the building materials amassing of the existing buildings. Signage, site lighting, and screening will also be reviewed administratively prior to issuance of building permits. And then the final request is for a final plat for the first, for lot one of Colonial Gardens, which covers approximately 16.69 acres, and does include dedication of additional right-of-way along southeast Wyatt Road. The applicant must provide a financial guarantee for improvements to Wyatt Road. Improvements will need to be completed within three years of the final plat approval, or prior to approval of the final plat for the second phase, or whichever comes first. Stormwater retention will generally be provided by the existing pond at the southeast corner of the site, and the site will also utilize an existing onsite sewer system for the first phase. A letter from Jackson County stating that that is adequate will be required before a building permit can be issued. Staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit, subject to six conditions, approval of the plan development final plan and site plan design review with 16 conditions, and approval of the final plat with eight conditions. Now, if you have any to answer, any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Wright? All right. Doesn't look like it.
All right. Thanks.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation this evening?
If anyone has any questions.
Do they have any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any.
Okay. Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition of the conditional use permit, all right, I'm sorry, in favor of the conditional use permit? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition of the conditional use permit? All right. We'll break back up here. Any questions, comments for the record? Doesn't look like it, so we'll close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion on the conditional use permit. Commissioner Banks?
I'm excited. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Colonial Gardens' conditional use permit,
I have a motion, do I-
And staff conditions.
With the six staff, staff conditions. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Phillips. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Heaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Baralata?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Kradoff?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item would be for the planned development final plan and site plan design review, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Banks?
Just might as well. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve case file PDFS-10-16-5552, the plan development final plan and site plan design review for Colonial Gardens with 16 staff conditions.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Duhon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries as well. I would entertain a motion for the final plat.
You want me to do it again?
Go ahead, Commissioner Banks.
We're on the roll. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Colonial Gardens' final plat PF-10-16-5553 with the eight staff conditions.
I have a motion, how about a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Heaney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I guess you can tell how excited everyone is to get this project going. Next item on the agenda is item six, preliminary plat for Reed Acres, and Mr. Jury is going to present that, along with item number seven, the final plat for that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Before you, you have a request to approve the preliminary plat and a recommendation of approval for the final plat for Reed Acres, which is generally located at 2,000 northeast Pink Hill Road, approximately 2,000 feet east of the intersection of, intersection of Jellison and Pink Hill. It's zoned residential estates, as you can see, and encompasses about 15 acres. There's currently two tracts, one about 10, the other about 5, and they're proposing to combine the two into one lot for a single-family house. So before this goes through, I'll mention a few things. I guess one being that northeast Pink Hill Road is actually owned by the county, thus the city can't ask for any public improvements to the road, and the county did not need any improvements with this plat. They stated that they do not need any sidewalk or street improvements. They did ask for a road access easement to be granted to the property owner, and that's shown on this plat, and also a drainage easement that the city or county can use, which has the language on it as well, for that drainage easement. The only easement that the city is requesting is a 15-foot utility easement on the southern boundary, which they have shown here on the final plat down along the southern boundary there. Beyond that, we do want to note that the applicant, or the owner of the property is responsible for both the septic and the water for this property. In terms of water, whether they haul it privately or make an arrangement with the Independence Water District, or, or some other form that they can obtain water, it's just that the city does not have a water line close enough to make it easily accessible at this point. But if they ever do, then they're more than welcome to join on, since they are in the city. As for the septic and the system, we also do not have a sanitary sewer nearby, and thus with the passed approval back in 2015, City Council Ordinance Number 4533, they allowed certain residential lots to go septic if they meet size requirements and other, other requirements such as that. So with that, the applicant will be required to provide their own septic system, which does require county permits, since the city does not do that, and they will also be required to have an onsite waste disposal agreement, and also the declaration of restrictions for their piece of land, which they have provided those documents to us, and they will be going on to city council. We don't need a ruling on those, but those are city council-approved, or will, will go before them for approval. Beyond that, staff does recommend approval of this with four conditions, and if there are any questions, I'll stand for answering.
Any questions for Mr. Jury? Doesn't look like it. Is the applicant here? Would you like to make a presentation or say anything?
Well, if you have questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Doesn't look like it. Seeing that, I would entertain a motion for the preliminary plat, if someone would be inclined to make one. Commissioner Phillips?
I'll do it this time.
Okay.
I move for approval of preliminary plat PP10165548 with the four staff conditions.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Fairbanks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. About for the final plat?
Sure, why not?
Okay.
I'll move for approval of the final plat PF10165549, again with the four conditions.
I have a motion from Commissioner Phillips, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Duhon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That recommendation will be sent to the city council for their 21st meeting, for their consideration, 6 o'clock on the 21st. That brings us to item eight, the amended plan residential overlay final plan for the pines, and Jim Hawley is going to present that.
Thank you. Yes, as noted, this is a request for approval of an amendment to a PRO final plan for the Pine subdivision. Troy Bella with Bella Homes is making this request. The Pines is located on the east side of Adams Dairy Parkway, approximately 1,400 feet north of southeast Shamrock Lane. The overall development consists of 31.04 acres, plus or minus. However, Lot Two, which is the only lot really being impacted, is about .51 acres. There are 51 lots in this particular subdivision, and it is zoned SF12 with a planned residential overlay, that is large lot, single-family. The applicant is requesting to reduce the interior side yard setback for Lot Two from 15 feet down to 7.5 feet, and the applicable section of the code here is 403-040G2, which states that minor deviations may be approved if they meet or exceed the approved concept plan, and then it defines what minor deviations are, and it lists several deviations that can occur, but the appropriate or the applicable deviation for this particular one is a rearrangement of buildings. That does not impact any setback standard, or decreases setback standard by less than 5 percent. So the applicant is proposing to construct a home, and he will meet the front yard setback, which is consistent with the other homes in the Pines. But because of the odd shape of this lot at the cul-de-sac, it's sort of a trapezoidal-shaped lot, the front portion of it is really narrow, it's about 42.42 feet, and it widens out as you move towards the back of the lot to about 158 feet. At the th- back of the lot to about 158 feet. At the 30-foot front setback line, with a 15-foot setback, he would be allowed to construct a home that has about a 33-foot home front each, 33 feet wide, in other words, at the front of the house. If he is to reduce, as he's requesting that, to 7.5 feet, that will allow him a 48-foot house front, or the width of the house would be 48 foot, which would really, in their opinion, be more desirable and consistent with the width of the front of the homes within the Pine subdivision. They did explore, I'll go to this lot, I think I'll go to this lot, give you a better idea of what we're talking about here. Let's see if that's it. I think this map maybe best shows what we're really talking about here. The applicant did look at moving this house back towards the rear of the lot, but because of the elevation changes in the lot as you move it back, the house drops down. And in looking at that, not only would that cause some construction issues, but it also caused some appearance issues within the subdivision, because most of the homes are set up near the 30-foot building line, and the further back they move it, plus the lower it sits, it just starts to look out of place. So they are requesting this deviation, and we looked at it in three different ways, which I provided in the staff report. We looked at it based on the total number of feet of setbacks within the subdivision, and if you just look at the area where they're proposing to reduce it in Lot Two, it's about a 1 percent change. We also looked at it from the total number of lots that were in there, and then, you know, divided that into the single lot that they're proposing, and that was about a 2 percent change. And we also looked at the total number of setbacks in there, and then divided that into two, and that again also came up with about a 2 percent change. So the point being that really they are within that 5 percent range for a minor deviation to the plan, and since this is the only change proposed, the staff does recommend approval with one condition. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Hawley?
I have one, please.
Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks.
Won't that make it...
Oh, Commissioner Fairbanks, I saw Commissioner Fairbanks.
Banks and Banks.
Commissioner Banks.
Okay. Will that make it offer close to the house next door?
Well, the house next door should have 15-foot setback, so it will be about...
On the side?
Yeah, on the side, so it will be about 15-foot, I'm sorry, it'll be about a 22.5-foot setback, distance between houses.
20 foot?
22.5.
22. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
So that's 7.5 feet on each side?
Yes. Any other questions for Mr. Hawley? All right. Would the applicant like to say anything? Any questions for the applicant? Doesn't look like it. All right, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Duhon?
I would like to move that we approve Plan PROF1016555 with one staff condition.
I have a motion, how about a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Phillips. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, brings us to Item Nine, Other Business. Mr. Allen, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to mention the next meeting is two weeks from tonight, the 28th. It's a Monday after Thanksgiving. And we do have a few items on the agenda, so I look forward to seeing everybody there. Vacation, which will be a public hearing for the QuickTrip store, the new store at Woods Chapel, and let's see here, amended Eagles Ridge Estates, PRO, portion for their commercial. What's being proposed there is also a site plan design review for Sun Fresh Market. So I look forward to bringing that forward to planning question then as well, so a few related applications with that. So just really two projects, the QuickTrip store, vacation, and final plat, and then a couple of applications for Eagles Ridge related to Sun Fresh Market.
Okay.
So that's coming up. And additionally, as we're talking about Thanksgiving, and then we start talking about Christmas, and here we are at the end of 2016 already, the second meeting in December is currently scheduled for Wednesday, the 28th, not to confuse with your next meeting, which is Monday, November 28th, but they're both the 28th, because City Hall is closed on Monday, December 26th, since Christmas is on a Sunday. So kind of pushes it to the middle of that week in between Christmas and New Year's, so.
Do you foresee any thing major coming through at that meeting?
Don't have anything on the radar at this point specifically for that meeting. Our application deadline is two weeks from this coming Friday, so there's a little bit of time to consider that, but the sooner we know, the better, if there's an appetite for canceling that meeting, or if we already know just based on attendance that there'd be a need to cancel a meeting.
I would be inclined to cancel that meeting unless I have some opposition from my other commissioners. Doesn't look like I do, so. Why don't we consider that meeting canceled?
Very good. I appreciate that advanced heads up, so we can get the word out to potential applicants.
Okay. Any other business to be brought forward? Commissioner Phillips?
It's time for my weekly downtown update.
All right.
Would like to remind everyone that on Thursday of this week is the downtown Holiday Open House. All of the merchants will be open late on Thursday evening, and there will be additional home-based craft-type merchants located in some of the non-retail businesses downtown. Be the sleigh ride up and down the street, all the things we've had in the past. That goes from 5:00 to 8:00 on Thursday evening.
All right. Sounds fun. Any other business?
Just a second.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.